The next step would be to, for our newly elected board members, to take the oath of office given by our Board Secretary.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so, um, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director.
In and for the school district R three, County of Jefferson, State of Missouri, to be, to the best of my ability, according to law, so help me God.
In and for the school district R three, County of Jefferson, State of Missouri, to the best of my ability, according to law, so help me God.
And then consign the executive chief and head of administration.
All right, our next item of business is with regards to the election of board officers, starting with president nominations, and I will turn this portion of tonight's business over to you, our superintendent.
All right, with the reorganization of the board, our process is for me to call for nominations for president of the R three Board of Education. I will call three times for nominations. A nomination can be made, and then I'll ask for a second of that motion, and then we'll fill in a name, then we'll go on to the next. Do that three different times, and then I will ask for motions to cease. So, do I have nominations for the Office of President?
I recognize John Linhorst, John Linhorst.
I recognize John Schusler recommending or motion to nominate John Linhorst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Calling a second time for a nomination of the Office of President of the R three Board of Education. Calling a third and final time for the Office of President nomination. Can I entertain a motion that nominations cease?
Motion.
Second.
That since there's only one, that John Linhorst be elected president by proclamation was by Angie. So she was nominated by Mr. Schusler. Can I get a show of hands for approval? Seven, zero. Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you all.
We do too.
We'll move through that same process through the vice presidents nominations. I'll ask three times for nominations for the vice president of the school board. Do I have a recommendation for the vice president of the school board?
Angie Oshie.
Do I have a second? All right, I'll ask one, ask a second time, do I have a nomination for the vice president of the school board? And a third and final time, I have a recommendation, nomination for the vice president of the school board. All right, with that in mind, do I have a motion that nominations cease?
Motion.
Second.
And that Angie Oshie be elected vice president of the school board by proclamation. Do I have the motion to approve Angie Oshie as vice president of the Hillsboro R three School Board?
Second.
Who was our first? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, congratulations on this motion.
You're moving.
All right, we'll now move through the same process for board treasurer. Do I have a nomination for the treasurer of the R three?
Nominate Beth Petry.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Nice, second opportunity for nominations to the R three, R three treasurer. And a third and final opportunity to nominate a board member to this, the R three School Board Treasurer position. Right, do I have a motion that those nominations cease and that Beth Petry be elected treasurer by proclamation?
Motion.
All those in favor of approval of Beth Petry as treasurer of the R three School Board? Motion carries, congratulations. All right, we also need to approve the secretary to the board, and that is a component of board policy B C C dash one. So, do I have a nomination for school board secretary?
Betsy Noack.
I have a second. This is a process that only requires one nomination, so all those in favor of approval of Betsy Noack as R three Board Secretary?
Thank you.
Congratulations. With that, there are some other items of our agenda, since there were no changes in positions, we will not need a resolution to change checking account signatures. So then we'll move into some open discussion. On our agenda, you have the presentation of board committees. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to entertain any changes to board committees. Everyone has their same assignments from the current school year, so this is an opportunity to, to change things, to look at what your schedules might be, if there are any thoughts with regard to the current presentation of the board committees.
I'm willing to come up, insurance, if anybody is dying to take my spot.
No, thank you. Nope.
Don't you need some experience? Uh, thanks, guys.
Relatively satisfied with their board committees and the work that they're doing, aside from Beth.
Aside, I'm happy, I'm willing to accommodate. Well, you've been talking to me. Okay, thanks.
Okay, and we will then approve these as part of such a new business here. So if there aren't any other adjustments, and Beth, you're okay with staying on the charts? Right, and we'll get back to that in just a few minutes. And on to some more regular business, we'll go to communications, recognitions, and information tonight with Board of Education.
All right, a few items, May is a busy month. May ninth, Thursday, at five thirty, we'll do personnel exam, five forty-five, or we can do it at...
No, I just, I think I had it down at six, I need to change it.
Six o'clock, we'll start the board recognition awards, which will be at the high school. So, five thirty allows us to do any hiring and use that, that time. So that, that meeting will occur more than likely in the library, at the, it'll be closed session in the library at the high school, and then we'll go and do our board recognition evening. And then the twenty-third will be the regular, regular monthly meeting, and then we have graduation the twenty-first. So that'll be a busy week there, so. May ninth, May twenty-one, and May twenty-third, so that's just three months of May.
Okay. Any questions? I will not be present for...
I will not be present on May ninth.
All right, we'll want me to work through that.
Yes.
Okay.
We have R three National.
Okay, we'll have to, we'll have to work through that. All right, moving on to our recognition tonight, the Transportation Department, one hundred percent approval rating on their Department of Transportation inspection for another year.
All right, could we invite our members of our transportation to come on up as I'm reading here? Congratulations to the Hillsboro R three Transportation. For achieving their third consecutive perfect score on the annual Missouri Department of Transportation inspection. This achievement speaks volumes about the exceptional work of our transportation mechanic, Mark De Bell, with a fleet of thirty-eight buses and the crucial responsibility of safely transporting approximately twenty-nine hundred students daily across a hundred and seven square miles in our district. Making top-notch service in our buses is paramount to ensure the safety of our students. A special acknowledgement also goes out to the bus drivers and administrators who took the time during spring break to assist with the inspection process. I included the photo there, but we also have certificates that the board will be handing out to the members. But tonight, I'd like to recognize Dr. Clay LaRue, who's our senior director of operations this year. Mr. Mark De Bell, transportation mechanic and shop supervisor. Mr. Jim Brooks, our assistant director of transportation. And Ms. Jeanne Klein, who drives for us, but then also assists Mr. De Bell in the garage and works, so. And there's a whole team of bus drivers that showed up to assist, and we have board certificates with them, and Dr. LaRue will hand those out in a meeting. So thank you to all of them, and good luck.
Congratulations.
Okay. Look at me, and I'm thirty-one, two, and thirty. Thank you.
I'll take a few portions.
Smile. You really can, I guess. Gosh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Thanks for coming. Thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
And we're gonna move on to district reports tonight, turn it back over to Dr. Eisen for the superintendent report.
All right. Within the superintendent report this month, I put an invitation that was brought to me from the Hillsboro Fire Protection Chief, Brian Goddade. It's actually the seventy-fifth anniversary of their Hillsboro Fire Protection District. They are going to be holding an open house on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, and they've invited the board members to attend. It's gonna be, just kinda coming at your convenience, and they're gonna have demonstrations, drive, and food trucks, and just being able to tour some of their facilities. They've done some upgrades in the main house and sleeping quarters upstairs, so they're going to celebrate the seventy-fifth year. Last week, Mr. Linhorst and myself attended the Legislative Advocacy Day in Jefferson City. It was a good day, the new incoming DESI Commissioner, Carla Esslinger, was there and spoke with all the attendees about... Didn't jump too much into firm plans, as she's still acting as a senator in the legislature and is finishing that role, but did lay some ideas out, and so that was informative. Were able to go and visit with some legislators from our area, and spent time with Gary Bodicker and Mr. Waller, Mrs., or Senator Andy Gannon, and visited with them. One of the things that a lot of them discussed was Senate Bill seven twenty-seven. It was kind of interesting at that time that there was actually some split on whether they thought it would pass, but I'm now hearing today that I feel like that's going to get passed. There is concern amongst those that voting against it is, and I'm concerned, there's some really good things within the bill as far as raising minimum teacher salaries and really supporting our educators. The drawback is there's no really mechanism for sustainability in being able to afford it. So then it becomes some unfunded mandates on school boards and local school districts that, hey, you have to get, you have to do this statutorily, but we don't have the funds to provide it. So then there'll be decisions that'll need to be made, or local taxpayers will have to pick up that, uh, kind of that gap there. So I put some information in the board packet, it's pretty extensive, so I encourage anyone watching online to jump into our agenda or send me an email, I can give you more specific information regarding Senate Bill seven two seven. Some other DESI news, Governor Parson has appointed two new board members to the state board. And so they will be going through that process of getting confirmed by the legislature. So I'll give you some information regarding their background. And finally, to end up, my, oh, and I also included the nurses, notes from your nurses from Ms. Woodham. There's some good information on the community calendar for April, I actually added that late this afternoon. And then finally, I didn't include this in writing in my report, but I wanted to read this this evening. So I visited with Mr. Linhorst on the board, is, tonight we'd like to recognize Mr. Steve Taylor. Tonight we want to pay tribute to a familiar figure whom many in Hillsboro and Jefferson County will undoubtedly know by name. We'd like to celebrate Mr. Steve Taylor's contributions as he embarks on a well-deserved retirement following years of service as a journalist. This evening marks his final attendance at the Hillsboro R three Board of Education meeting as a journalist and reporter for The Leader. The Hillsboro R three School District and the Board of Education would like to recognize him accordingly. Steve has been a backbone of local journalism in Jefferson County, serving as the editorial page editor and news and community editor at The Leader newspaper, and I believe at some other newspapers previously here locally. His commitment to truthful, insightful reporting on a broad spectrum of issues has made a significant impact on our community. For those who've had the pleasure of reading The Leader, you've undoubtedly been informed by the stories and perspectives that Steve has brought to light. Throughout the past year, Steve has consistently attended our board meetings, approaching our deliberations and decisions with utmost professionalism. Through his efforts, our community has remained thoroughly informed about key information and the initiatives undertaken by our district. But during this period as well, I've had the privilege of acquainting myself with Steve, and his commitment to disseminating information to the community has always been evident. He possesses a sincere dedication not only to delivering timely and accurate news regarding school business and financial matters essential to his readers, but also to crafting numerous features and human interest stories highlighting the remarkable achievements of our students and staff. On behalf of the Hillsboro R three School District and Board of Education, we extend our deepest gratitude to Steve for his service and dedication to the citizens of Jefferson County. Your work has not only informed, but also enriched our lives. As a token of our appreciation and recognition of your career, the board is honored to present you with the R three Board of Education Recognition of Excellence Medal. This award is a testament to your commitment to journalism and your impact on our community. Steve, as you embark on this new chapter in your life, though that your work and dedication have had a positive impact, we wish you all the best in your retirement, and enjoy the time and relaxation you deserve. Thank you.
Now, don't break the leg.
It's just been a pleasure covering your faults, really. Thank you, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm gonna hold the meeting longer. All right, we have one more report tonight, that's the district financial report from Miss Kenge.
Erin's gonna bring that up on the screen for me. It's relatively small print. Um, this will be the same report that I have presented in the past with the colored lines that highlight some different areas of where we are today at the end, through the end of March, and where we were last year through the end of March. The yellow lines, if you remember, are like items that show over here in the percent of budget column, their showing is over budget, but truly as a whole, like tuition, the first one, we still have money in there, we have in... Well, that one is over budget, but if you add it together with the other tuition lines, not over budget. The OT and PT, they're over budget, and that's just due to how the accounting system recognizes the purchase order that we have in place for that. And then the bottom, same thing, it looks like it's going to be over budget over in the right-hand column, and that's because we have an O P O for the roof that the insurance company is fixing from that storm. You're going to have?
Hmm.
Yeah, so we have an O P O out there for them, they needed that to order them. So the more purple-looking lines, if you can scroll back up, Erin, please, thank you. The federal revenue, I wanted to highlight the difference year-over-year. Yeah, the innermost column is our current year-to-date. Basically, the difference is there, it's just timing of when I pull down funds for either IDEA, special ed, ESTER funds, it's just a matter of when I pull those down, that's why those numbers look the way they do. Other revenue, the difference there, last year, if you remember, I think I talked about this last month, we had the Schneider Electric project, so when we do a financing like that, we have to still recognize the revenue that comes in to pay for that financing, so. That's why there's a difference year-over-year there. As we go, move on down through the expenditure lines, other regular instruction, that includes things like summer school, juvenile detention, and alt-school expenses. This year, we had, this past year, like this past summer, we had more enrollees, and we had a higher enrollment in summer school, basically. We had to hire more staff, so that's the main reason for that cost being higher over last year, in addition to the fact that, you know, we gave raises, benefits were a little more expensive, things like that. Down a little bit further, there's guidance services, and that's higher this year, again, personnel expenditures were higher. We had some people that left, and we hired new people, I corrected some coding on a few individuals. Again, raises, increase in benefits, things like that is the main reason that that line is higher. And then the last one I want to highlight is this improvement of instruction line, and basically that's Title II funds and PD funds. So we budgeted more in there, as you can see over here, we're at like thirty-nine percent of budget, which is a little low, but we budgeted high because we have those Title II funds. If we would spend all of our PD money, we're just able to code some things to Title II. So we haven't been spending a lot of our Title II money because we need to spend out PD money. There's not a lot of difference in expenses there, but we have more people traveling to PD events, so we're paying out more reversals and things like that. Those are my, like, big highlights for this month, just to kind of talk about on there. The next thing I want to talk a little bit, that next slide, Erin, is just budget amendments. I just briefly wanted to talk about budget amendment, because I'm doing one this month in new business. As you know, our budget is a working document, it changes throughout the year as better information becomes available. The entire budgeting cycle, it's just a continuous process, because things change, you approve things at meetings, you know, that come up through the year, so that, you know, we have to change the budget. So, like I said, on there, amendments are made as we get better information, like tonight, the budget amendment that you will approve. Total expenditures by fund can never exceed the budgeted amount, so like Fund Ten, which we talked about that last month, or Fund Twenty, the teachers' fund, debt service, or capital, you can't ever go out over what is currently budgeted. And then lastly, a budget amendment needs to take place once we know something is going to change in the budget. So once revenues or expenditures that we know that that's going to change, it's time to amend the budget. So I'm sure you'd like a brief little discussion about budget. My budget amendment will be in new business, so. Again. Does anyone have questions? All right, thank you.
Any questions, thank you. Moving on to public comments, do we have any items of public comments? Find out, should we?
No.
No? Okay. All right, we have no items of board policy, so we'll move on to tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Any items A through G tonight for comments, polls, or any other items of concern?
May I say something, please? I have a written or a paper copy of the math curriculum, if you would prefer to view it on paper than on electronic.
You have one, one taker? Anybody else? No, okay, and we'll see that math curriculum come back for approval next month, second reading. Okay. There are no other comments, I'm hearing none, all those in favor of approval of tonight's consent agenda? None opposed, motion carries. We have no items of unfinished business, so we'll move on to tonight's new business. Our first item of new business is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty-eighth Board of Education? Comments, amendments, or concerns with tonight's minutes?
It was an accent, was it?
No. Actually, you are listed accent. Yeah, it says you are listed accent.
Do we have an amendment to the minutes?
Maybe I got the meetings mixed up, I'll have to go back and look.
According to my screen, it says Mrs. Oshie was there.
But if whenever you go into the meeting minutes itself, it says he's listed accent within the meetings.
It does.
But he made motions, so.
But he made motions throughout the meetings, so.
I don't know.
Magic. I was just confused, was he there or was he not?
I was there. You were.
Yeah, I will, should we?
I think the system on the original thing, I think it was a... The default is set to absent? No.
So when you first, if you were here late, I have to do my roll call, and it's an electronic roll call. And so if you weren't here at that moment and I marked you as absent, then it's going to mark you as absent. So I'll have to go back and correct it.
Six oh two or whatever.
Yeah.
What, so do these minutes need to, need a full review? And we can, we can always bring them back?
Bring them back.
Okay. So then I will entertain a motion to table the approval of these minutes to, to our next meeting, which will be the May?
Twenty-third. I'll just do a number here.
May, May twenty-third. Okay. And do we have a second to table these?
Yes.
All those in favor of tabling these minutes? And we'll move them into the next open meeting. Okay. Going back to our open discussion on board committee assignments and updates for twenty-four, twenty-five, do I have a motion to approve the committee assignments for twenty-four, twenty-five as we discuss them in a few minutes?
No papers?
I wish.
Great policy, but we're both on policy.
That won't help.
Is it important maybe for people to be able, especially anyone attending, to be able to know who's on what committee or?
I believe that's, I don't know that that's...
I guess we're not projecting it or, you know, that information's kind of...
I don't mind reading those off.
Yeah. There are, there are a number of committees, but yes.
So for the board committee assignments, calendar committee will be Director Cruz, Director Oshie, and Director Cage. Insurance committee, Director Petrie, Director Stevenson, Director Cruz. The meet and confer committee, Director Lindhorst, Director Petrie, and Director Schusler. That meeting, those meetings are posted in accordance with Board Policy BCE, being negotiations, those being closed meetings. Policy review committee, Director Petrie, Director Oshie, Director Schusler. The wellness committee, Director Oshie, Director Stevenson, Director Lindhorst. That committee, if you remember, will have the additional duty this year of the stipend that's part of our MOU as far as reimbursement for the employees. Legislative committee, Director Schusler, Director Stevenson, and Director Cruz. Curriculum committee, Director Schusler, Director Lindhorst, Director Cage. Facility, Director Cruz, Director Stevenson, Director Lindhorst. Hawk Award and Support Staff of the Year, Director Petrie, Director Stevenson, and two former board members serving that. Our TAB, which is Teacher Administrative Board Committee, Director Petrie, Director Oshie, Director Cruz. Teacher of the Year Committee, Director Cruz, Director Petrie, and Director Oshie. The MSBA delegate will be Director Lindhorst, with Director Oshie as the alternate. And the board representatives to the foundation, Director Lindhorst and Director Oshie. And those are the board committees.
The list, as mentioned. Thank you all to your dedication to all of this, all of the committee work that we, that we do as a board. Any other questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the committee as presented? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to new business regarding the career letter program. Do I have a motion to approve the career letter handbook for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as presented?
Seven seconds.
Any items of note, comments, questions on the updated handbook?
What were, what were the significant changes? Were there any?
Adding the third step.
Yeah.
Okay. But that was pretty much it or?
They also removed, from what, from this year, we had, you had to do more than one activity for your career letter. They removed that and have it just to be one. There was some concerning teachers that they wanted to do some bigger projects that were going to take more hours. So they reduced it to one, and then they reduced the hours, the priority hours, so the kid contact hours, they made it, they increased it to sixty percent. And then their planning hours, they reduced that to forty instead of fifty-fifty. Those were the biggest changes.
And that was all positively received or?
Yep, the committee came up with those.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the coming year's handbook? None opposed? Motion carries. On to the approval of the purchase sale agreement with the Hillsborough Fire Protection District. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase sale agreement to buy back approximately one point eight acres of property from the Hillsborough Fire Protection District for a total of seventy-five thousand dollars?
No motion.
Any questions here, some additional insight on this purchase?
Yes, this is the one point eight acres that we had sold in two thousand twenty, I believe it was January of two thousand twenty. The Hillsborough Fire Protection District at that time wanted to secure land for a new firehouse. That location, just kind of that circle, if you pin where their current firehouse is, they need to maintain a pretty close proximity to that location because it has a direct impact on people, our community's fire rates. Because if they move it to Hillsborough City Park, they're further away from member, the location and district for people to the north. And so proximity was important. Since purchasing that property, and we had sold it to them for approximately seventy-five thousand at that time, they have recently purchased the Casey's property across the street, which allows them to add onto their current firehouse and does give them direct access to Highway Business Twenty-One. Also during that period of time, visiting with chief is, as our farm events have grown, I think people would rather see the firehouse there as well on Twenty-One. And we had plans to, we'll still do some of the educational things that we're going, we were going to do because of proximity, but we'll just be purchasing this back from the fire department. As they have been owners, we've been able to use the parking lot. And it has great value to us. And we wouldn't want to see it go anywhere else. And they want us to have it too. It just makes sense. So just buying it back from them at the same price we purchased it and then moving forward.
With them, i-if they were to build there, were they still going to allow us to use the parking lot for events?
They would have, we would have had to, that parking lot wouldn't have been the note of the firehouse.
Then I thought, I thought it was going further over towards the woods, so.
Yeah, but I mean, it would have been, it would have definitely impacted that in light of recent construction events. You couldn't build that parking lot for seventy-five thousand dollars, you know, with the cost of things, so.
So it's definitely a benefit for us to keep it?
Oh, absolutely.
Or reacquire it?
Reacquire it. If, if it was going to get used for the fire department and, and part of that was the board making that decision, working with another government entity to make it, where insurance rates and for, because they didn't have another option at the time. Now that they do, yeah, this is, we wouldn't want them, they don't need it now. If it would get sold to someone else, we wouldn't have access to that.
So we'd be able to recruit them. Makes sense to me.
Any other questions?
This is the same price that we sold it for, right? Exactly, yeah. They had some closing built in. I want to say they paid seventy-six six, so it's seventy-five was agreed upon purchase price. When they bought it from us, we're just giving them their money back essentially.
Okay. All right, one last call for any questions. All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approval of this purchase agreement? None opposed? Motion carries. Directly connected that and the approval of the resolutions of the board for, as they pertain to this purchase. So do I have a motion to approve the resolutions of the Board of Education, Hillsborough R-3 School District, as they pertain to the purchase of this approximate one point eight acres of property?
Second. That parking lot actually does have an address now because the fire department hadn't put one on there. So it's officially two hundred Broadridge Lane. So the barn is two sixty-four, I believe. So they had to give an address.
Yeah, welcome back into the R-3 family.
Parking lots have their own address.
Any questions on these resolutions? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the approval of the resolutions? And none opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the approval of our memorandum of understanding with this youth outreach. Do I have a motion to approve the MOU with that, this youth outreach as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, any additional detail on what this MOU entails?
From what was formerly known as Comtri, so this is just a continuation of their services through next year.
Why the name change?
Comtri, no, I'm discussing Solutions, used to be our, our employee and student provider, and they no longer provide those services. So I believe these people broke away from that and created the road.
Other questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of this MOU as presented? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then we have the district budget amendment. Do I have a motion to authorize the chief operating officer of the twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four budget as detailed in the agenda this evening? Any additional questions on the budget tonight? All right, thank you, Mrs. Gench, for your presentation this evening. All those in favor of the approval of the budget amendment? And none opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the end of new business tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight at seven forty-three? All those in favor of adjourning tonight's meeting? We are adjourned. Thank you all.